The United States of America, a truly repented, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Damon will be along, so we'll get started. It's kind of a long meeting, you have a presentation later with Tracy, so let's see what wonderful surprises this agenda holds for us. Oh, it begins off with a very scintillating report from the chair. And that is, I signed a P-17 AD payroll, and I signed a P-17-19 payroll, and I signed a VW-17-19 payroll, I mean, excuse me, Verizon Wireless Selectmen, iPad, and I signed a BW-17-20, not the Boston Legal Ad Corps. Public hearings, none. New business. We have a request for the use of public property. Is Joanne Johnson here? No. She's done this often, right? They've done it many, many times. Is everything in order as they've always usually been? So, and the request is for the use of the Upper Green Backstop Friday, April 21st, the English Jeff, through Monday, May 8th, for the May 6th and 7th Newburyport Coral Society concert. Thanks, JR. Any discussion? All those in favor? Request for public property use, special permit. Is Tara here tonight? This is for the American Diabetes Association, Framingham, Mass., use of the Upper Green Route 1, and as for a rest stop during the ADA Art or Cure, done this a long time to rest a ride from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Sunday, May 21st, 2017. And they also have, I believe, a date, no, everything will be picked up by, May 19th, picked up by Monday, May 22nd. Is everything as they've always done it? Everything's in order?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? As I see it, we have two one-day licenses, I'll take them both. It is from the Bifeed Community Arts Center. It is Saturday, March 25th, 2017, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. And the next one would be from the Community Bifeed Arts Center, is a Saturday, April 22nd, 2017, 7:30 to 10:30 PM. Yes, decided.
The first has obviously passed, it was last Saturday. And this didn't come before you because of the big snowstorm. So, this was a fundraiser for the Newbury Food Pantry, and instead of selling our beer and wine, we put it out and asked people to make donations for that. And fortunately, wonderfully, the Newbury Food Pantry raised over $2,000 in the evening.
I mean, it sounds good to me, and aren't you impressed that we didn't know that date was... That being said, can we have a motion discussed on the second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion, thank you, ladies? All those in favor? Jonathan?
Yeah?
Maybe you have a lengthy portion of our packet, and I want you to know that everything you're doing, we're looking at with great approval, at least from this selectman. Do you want to kind of preface us one more time on what you're doing, so that we don't lose track of exactly what it is?
All right, so I have a proposal.
Introduce yourself, see if you can...
John Higgins with Higgins Environmental, at Amesbury, Mass. I'm an environmental consultant, geologist, scientist. And I came up with a way of cleaning out ponds, taking out soft sediment and algae, excess nutrients. And I've looked for a good demonstration pond, and there's two in Newbury. That's the Upper Green Pond, right across from Town Hall, and Marston's Pond, I guess they call it down by the town land. Doug Packer, let me know about that one. And what I'll be doing, proposing to do, is to take out the excess algae and the soft sediment in the ponds, both those ponds. And I'll put signs up to, you know, to demonstrate what I'm doing. I expect to have a pretty minimal amount of soft sediment, Upper Green Pond, about 100 cubic yards, which is like cordwood. There's not a lot. I think it is, it's pretty expanded, but it's in the wild, and when it dries out, it gets a lot smaller. But on Marston's Pond, I'm actually proposing to discharge that into the Farquhar River, which might sound scary to some people, but this soft sediment is kind of what clam flats are made out of. It gets stuck in these ponds behind dams and can't get, make its way down into these coastal environments. And that's, that's actually what I'm going to be working on. We also have another pond in Amesbury called Clark's Pond, a lot bigger. We're doing the same thing. A lot of times, the stream behind the dam is fine sediment star, it's wide, it's all held out above the dam. And but we will be testing that sediment first and the algae. Doug Packer asked me to also test the algae for its toxins, the algae...
That would be the question for us, obviously, is you going through the CONCOM for any other relevant thought that they might have on this project?
Yeah, the CONCOM's approved both projects as RDA's already, slightly less than... So that's...
Awesome.
Yeah, right, and the cost, there's no charge from me other than just my laboratory costs, which are direct costs. That's, it's already covered, yeah, or something, so...
CONCOM's aware of your attempted discharge into the river?
Yeah, they, you know, they think like I do, if it's good quality soft sediment, that's where it should, that's where it's supposed to go. And their word would go if it wasn't for the time restriction and things like that. It's like leaf litter and geese poop.
To finish that out a little bit, what John is saying is, all these storm scepters, all these packin' lots, all these trees that we have now on our rivers, such as the Mary Mac River, yes, they're doing their job, let's say, especially as a storm scepter, better management practice, but they're trapping all the sediment. And it would be nice to, want to make a million dollars? Devise a way to get those storm scepters better managed, practice to treat the sediment, then release it. Because it's those sediments that not only build clam flats, that build the beach on Plum Island, that build the Great Lakes, so it accumulates in height.
Exactly, all the shellfish filter that stuff out, they sell food for them.
Keep taking that sediment away from our rivers.
But, so this technology can handle it in controlled manner, so we'll be testing it ahead of time for laboratory analysis to make sure it's okay to discharge. And this is a, this is a small volume stuff, 100 cubic yards, it's, it's below everyone's radar. If you're looking at what permits apply, if you're, if you're 100 yards or less, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't matter to them. So it's good for me.
And you're testing it before?
We tested it before, and Doug, you know, Conservation Commission wanted me to test the algae for the toxins it gives off. I had to talk to him a little bit about that. All plants give off toxins, that's how they keep from being... When you can't move it, you're definitely give off toxins. Basically, and the cyanobacteria, no exception, but I had to talk to him about that and see what we can do.
So...
Can we ask questions?
Well, yep, let's make a motion, there won't be discussion, motion? The process plan for the ecological demonstration, you're looking for an approval for us to proceed.
Yeah, from Conservation Commission, of course, like, right?
So, motion to approve with CONCOM's, okay.
Second.
Now ready for discussion, any questions from the audience?
So, two questions, actually. Do you know if it's, they've ever, that road up to the, I don't know what it's called, the Riverside Road, whatever it is, that road has been there since the 1800s, so it's, so it's the sediment or whatever's been collecting back there. Do you know if it's ever been cleaned out before?
This is the Towne Landy Pond?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, a little...
I don't think it's ever been cleaned up before. One of the first things they do is actually environmental assessment, to see like what kind of impacts it might be. It's a little bit about history too, so, yeah, if you have any information that, I didn't know it went back to 1800.
It's right next to my property.
That qualifies.
I was just wondering if it ever...
I have, of course. One of the things, one of the first things they'll do is to survey just what the sediment thicknesses are, extent, it's about a third of an acre.
I'm the drainage basin.
Oh, you're the drainage basin?
That's where, that's where the sediment's coming from.
Oh, interesting.
And, and further up, it's, it's part of the old gutters, if you look at the 1635 man, I do gutters.
Where is it?
Right across from the green.
Okay, good.
I'm the old antique place.
The Upper, the Upper Green?
I was thinking, yeah.
Lower Green.
Lower Green.
You're not the Towne Landy?
The Towne Landy one, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, that's, you called it the lower green.
Yeah, if you stand at the Towne Landy and, and look across the pond, that's my property.
All right, okay.
And now, I'm trying to think of if you might have been, now I understand.
Yeah, we're right on target.
I remember.
So, you'll know, you'll know I'm there working when you see a line of, it looks like a line of floats. And I'm going to hit the pond in strips.
And you're going to pump it out, or?
I'm going to, well, I'm going to, I'm going to pump it out, I use these things called peat pods initially. They, they have these little fabric things that'll rest on the surface, allows me to disturb the sediment inside in the closed area without adding a lot of extra water, and I could suck it right out of the peat pod. And then as I suck it out, the peat pod collapses, so I don't have to add in a lot more water. And then I could just inject air, don't inflate it, lift it out of the water, move it.
And that's the new development?
I have three, yeah, there's three. The other, the other is a floating system I have, that takes out algae directly from the water. And that uses really pretty neat technology.
If you catch any beavers in that, take them with you.
I don't know.
So you're coming up on my property?
I don't think beavers show up when I'm there, really, okay, I haven't seen the beaver stuff, but I grew up...
There's a, there's a big beaver den, whatever they're calling it.
I, I did plan on discharging over the road, I have some flexible hosing, just while I'm working, I actually did throw it across. People can drive across it, it wouldn't affect anything. And it just, I do it in small segments, so it wouldn't be like there's a big major release of sediment. Which is another problem, take out dams, it's like a waste in project.
Well, I mean, the concept that we're dealing with makes sense, and the CONCOM is providing that extra protection on what you can do kind of legally and what within their domain is allowed. So, it makes us feel pretty good in what you're doing, and you certainly provide a heck of a service to the town.
And it's all controllable, what you can observe, but...
The algae's been really worse, even given just the 10 years I've been there, it's a lot worse than it was. It used to be, the pond was much clearer, there wasn't so much stuff growing up off the bottom, there's less, less room for the frogs and turtles.
Well, I think there's so much algae in there, it's actually probably keeping the rest of the plants from filling it in.
My guess is we're getting more phosphorus coming in from the farms.
Okay, okay. But we can use it now, we use it in everything now, phosphorus is...
Well, you're getting it from the lungs and stuff, keeping it warm and everything.
And it's also, you know, organic phosphorus. It's also been organic phosphorus. Organic phosphorus is not soluble in water, inorganic, it's like if I had to store it, as soon as it rains, it was, and it... Which is good for people selling phosphorus, because you have to keep buying more.
On a side note, one thing I will say about phosphorus in farming, it's definitely on the downward trend because of the price. So that's one thing people can feel good about, it's not being used heavily handed and just leaching away, like it was...
That's why I was questioning if it ever been, been done before, because just over the 10 years I've been there, I can see the buildup.
I've never seen it, I've never heard about it being dredged. I did hear about there was an oil truck that got damaged and was stuck there for a while, you must know about that.
Don't know.
Was an oil truck that like got stuck down there and it broke down or something?
You mean on the road?
Yeah, Marston Pond, yeah. I should give you a card, so you're local, you have local knowledge, and maybe if I could tell you sometime, you could email me.
Yeah.
Were there any other questions?
I could be hard.
No, I, I think, I think we're good. Any other questions in the audience? All those in favor?
Thank you, thank you.
We have a presentation by Green ER. Oh, I was going to say, I'm not positive I see them, now I see them.
I'm here to represent them anyway.
All right, straight, come on up. And this is something that Keith Dablow and his son, and a couple of people with him, came to us before to present a, maybe a reconditioning, a cleanup, a reorganization, and certainly maybe something more upscale for our Upper Green. And we certainly said we'd like to see further information, that was a motion by the board of selection.
First off, my name's Warren Fisher, I'm the owner of Visionary Landscapes here in town in Newbury, working with, I was asked by Keith Dablow and his son, Cole, to come up with ideas to help them for the restoration and preservation, it's a nonprofit that I'm trying to do, of historic greens around the Windland, and they live right off the Green, so they thought, what not more in living in Newbury? An appropriate place.
Warren, I don't mean to interrupt you, but, and correct me if the board thinks I'm wrong, but we can see you if you're over there, and then the audience can see you.
Camera can see it.
And the camera also, yeah. And we can still see it, we can hear you, and everything's good.
Put this up on the couple of...
Awesome, creative.
So, on that note, what they want to do is start with the Upper Green. And the first thing I did was talk with them and say, try and get this to stay. Right, I'll just hold it. Anyway, what are our goals? What are you trying to accomplish? So, first thing you do in design is just kind of throw up a sketch plan, draw it out, and say, what are we trying to do? Well, the goals were to create passive and active recreation. Oh, thank you very much. Anyway, the active recreation, obviously, is in the center and around the ball field, where most of it occurs. That's where most people play and so forth, whether it be frisbee, with their dogs, et cetera. Passive act, active recreation, if you notice, most of the people, it's around the pond, or it's over underneath the trees on the opposite side over on Green Street. People sit and picnic and so forth, have their lunch, hang out. So, in that, so all right, so we recognize that, recreate a perimeter. I'm going to kind of go back and forth here. Back in 1895, you looked at the historic green, it was surrounded by elm trees, the perimeter of the Upper Green. And, of course, they died out because you got elm disease, and one of the things that I thought would be really beautiful is if we could recreate that perimeter and recreate the restoration of what it once looked like. Now, we can't use elms, but there are several other trees that you could use, and my suggestion would be sugar maples. One, it would create the look in the fall and so forth, I think it would be absolutely spectacular to have it completely surrounded by beautiful sugar maples. Also, kids in the future, they could tap into them, make sugar maple, they could learn from it. Something that could be utilized in education, and it's a native species, of course, you know. So, trying to do that, understanding also what they wanted to do with the goals was to fix the ball field and then have a plan, it's a nonprofit, so creating money on a yearly basis and having people to maintain that ball field. So, saving the town money and making it just more beautiful for the kids. With that also is to have handicap accessibility. One thing, a lot of the greens and so forth, it's great, but if you're in a wheelchair and it's wet and so forth, in the spring or the fall, it's not so easy to get across the grass. So, one of the suggestions was to bring in brick pathways. Around the pond, bringing it over, which I'll show in a minute in the, this design, is to create a brick walkway that would go around the actual pond. Where the seating is, move that forward with the benches, so that the elderly, handicap, and so forth could have accessibility around the pond. Bringing it around the flagpole, there are many people that live in Newbury that don't even know there's a flagpole. They drive by it every day, because it just, you don't notice it. And the memorials for the war veterans and so forth. You can see the rock which is over by the ball field and these pictures that were there back in 1895. Nobody ever stops to read them. So if we could create signage, which explains the history of Newbury, which a lot of people don't know, but it's an agricultural town. It was started by a company out of Wilshire, England, that sent men and cattle and came over to Newbury and settled it as a cattle town. And so, drawing attention to that, letting people know and actually drawing attention so that they would go to the memorial, so that they would read the plaques. And how we did this was a couple of things, came up with an idea with the history of Newbury signage, getting attention by the brick access and the signage, and also making it dog friendly, so maybe putting in receptacles and then having trash bags that you could pull out for the dogs, which, of course, they would supply, so that, you know, because a lot of dogs go there anyway, but it would help keep it clean for cleaning up after the dogs. To aerate the pond, one idea is to possibly put in an aeration, maybe some type of fountain in the center, which would just keep it clean and aerate it and keep the geese out of it. I'm not so sure the science of the fox is really working all that great personally. Other things, lighting, possibly creating lighting and sculpture. Now, there's pictures here on the side of cattle that actually got from Singapore, but they were really cool. And I thought, if we were to put in cattle sculptures made of bronze that were over here perhaps, one grazing, one standing up, they would be raised up with granite around them, and then having plants, as you can see here, native plants, like they're actually grazing. But for maintenance, it'd be easy, because you can come right around it with your turrets. Light them up at night, so you've got two here, and then right near the memorial with the stone wall behind it, putting one other cattle, and with that, having a signage showing the history of Newbury. So people would actually draw attention to it, they would look at it, and it could be something for years and years and years to come, where people are like, oh, Newbury Green, you know, with the, with the cattle sculpture, with the pond, with the history, and keeping it all open, so that all the events can still go on. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. So lighting, you know, pulling attention to the flagpole, using sculpture, education, signage, maintenance, and then again, recreating that feeling of the old fashioned common by creating this perimeter with sugar maples. Now, the other thing would be possibly on the corner here, where they have a turnaround at the end, they've stopped, you know, off Green Street, right here is where Vern's gas station was, across from Newbury Town Hall. Maybe just sliding that over. So we still have the, the turnaround here for emergency access, but just pushing it over a little bit so that we could plant around the actual flagpole with high treNDUs and so forth, so you don't feel like you're right there on the corner. It's creating a buffer. Be simple, it'd be clean, and I think it would be pretty. There is another option, this just shows what it would look like from the street. It's an elevation of the Upper Green, so what would it look like if you were looking at these, you know, big sugar maples in bloom? Or in fall, I should say. I think it would be very nice. And this just shows what it would look like if you were looking across, and you would see the trees in the background. This is that existing spruce tree and the cattle. Now, if people are opposed and say, we don't want about the existing trees, which I understand, there's two options. One, which I prefer, and I, I think would be nice, because it brings back the old, original perimeter, even if it's not elm, sugar maple, or it could be zelkova. Now, an example of this, and people were upset about cutting the trees down in Newbury Port, right along the pond, right in front of the old historic courthouse. If you look at it now with all those zelkova trees, I think it's beautiful, you know. It, it really created in LA, and there was a, there was some resistance, and I understand that, because I'm an urban forester and a landscape architect, and I love trees. But sometimes you have to remove some of the old trees to create, for the long run, what we're trying to accomplish. And I think that's a prime example, because I think it's quite beautiful what they did there. But if you wanted, another option is to also, oh, one thing I forgot, is on here to create a picnic area over off the corner of where Green comes in and across, so put in some picnic tables, and then in front planting flowering dogwood trees, so you have flowering trees with the sugar maples in the back, and some picnic tables, people can actually, instead of always sitting on the grass, they could actually sit down and socialize and play games or have a picnic, et cetera. You could keep the old trees and maybe just plant three sugar maples, because there's nothing there right now, right in front of the pond, directly across from the old town hall, and still doing the picnic area with, with the flowering dogwoods. Or go in the other route, where we plant all the way around. This is the one, right, they're the same? I think I put the same one up. All right, the other one's in the truck, sorry. But anyway, so those are the options, and that's what they're trying to do, is basically to restore, preserve, draw attention to the history, and really maintain the Upper Green, and bringing back its glory, you know.
Warren, thanks. One of the things, just to add a little more information, I'm going to ask the board if they did read the report from the Historic Commission? And then I'm going to maybe take a few excerpts of that from folks that are in the audience, and for you, and you can take a copy of this, obviously. Historic Commission was concerned, maybe concerned too strong, but wanted to make sure that would they consider some of the historic uses and ideologies that were formulated around these old historic greens was kept, which you were pretty aware of in your presentation. But they did talk very quickly about, when a property is listed in the natural register as a private property, owner in no way gives up the right of ownership, nor his treatment or the use of the property that is restricted. However, if the property is altered and it loses its qualities, that it's made insignificant in this move to the register. Some of the thinking, I think, behind that is that these historic greens had use, because that's where people grazed their cattle and supposedly this was a training green that Benedict Arnold or someone slept in or something.
Yeah, it's true, that's why I wanted to draw attention to the memorial, to try to...
And the other thing that they talked about is, the addition of trees on the outer ring has been the scariest in prior meetings due to the killing off of rose salt. The planting of trees too close to the outfield of the ballpark area would affect its use as a ball playing field. We, this is from the Historic Commission.
Just so you know, sir, not to interrupt you, but I actually kept them far away for that reason. Not knowing that they said that, but I thought the same thing. So, there's actually a tree here now, so I'm not creating anything, and we kept it far apart.
The ones that are going to be down below.
The outfield.
The outfield, so let's just go...
Oh, okay.
And what I, just let me get through this, and then we'll all talk about it. The planting of trees too close to the outfield of the ballpark area would affect its use as a baseball playing field. We do encourage the replacement of trees, of existing trees that are dying off, so the green will retain its original character. Sculptors, sculptures are not in keeping with the traditional use and character of the green. The town vetoed the placement of the trash recycling tower currently at Newbury Elementary School for the same reasons. A farm area was in use in the pond in earlier times, but has since fallen into disrepair. Replacement of this element would not be out of category. The Upper Green is also being annually from musters, which you'll be lucky enough to have one of, the folks that are pretty involved in the musters here, the selectmen will weigh in on that in a minute. So, which will be open space to continue these types of additions in 2000, and on and on. So that's some of the, Keith, that's some.
Right.
There's, from the Historic Commission, they weighed in a little bit about, we don't want to scrunch up the uses that are there.
Right.
And I think, for lack of a better definition, correct my board if I think that I'm overstating it, the scrunching down of the uses that exist there are not going to be probably received with great vigor. But anyway, do you want to talk a little bit about the musters use?
Yeah.
JR, explain how you're involved?
Old fashioned finance musters have happened at the Green since at least 48 that I'm aware of. The plantings and tables and trees in front of the pumping platform completely eliminate that use on that plan. And I could show you exactly what I'm talking about.
So over here?
Yes.
You're on that cement wall?
We could exorcise those, certainly. In other words, remove them from the plan.
Well, I mean, this is what we're, we're getting feedback a little from JR for some of that traditional use. I just spoke about some of the things that the Historic Commission put in place. So we're trying to decide and give you information, so that you understand some of the concerns that are just, that are very...
And I can show you exactly what I'm talking about.
Go ahead, go ahead, JR. These are some of the concerns that are precastled, and it could get deeper, it could meant to, but we're giving you an idea of some of the first ones that are coming to mind.
The pumping platform for the musters is right here.
Yeah.
Hose leads out to the pipe platform to the pipe man, which is right in the middle of this stuff. Basically, that would be in the way, that would be in the way, and these, and the benches.
Yeah, and they can, they can be removed from the plan in order to, obviously, we don't want to, we don't want to eliminate or impinge upon any traditional use of the green. It's all about augmenting and beautifying and restoring it to its historical significance, not stepping on make toes.
Well, Keith, you're, you're in the business, so you're going to understand the first reaction of a human being. So this is what we have, primordially speaking, what pops up.
Sure.
That's a historic use, this might impair that historic use. Baseball that's been there for a long time, we don't want to really scrunch up that area for the guys to, Little League and whatever teams play there. So these are things that, as they come to light, you might want to incorporate that in some of... I mean, I don't know if the cow placements, I don't think they involve all the...
It'd have to be a real foul.
Well, see, these are, these are the things that, as a selectman, except for JR, is very qualified to talk about the muster. I can't... I can't talk about what the restrictions that some impingement of placement of things could cause the use of that as a playing field or maybe some of the other traditional uses of there. So Vern, I mean, if you can contact, you know, people that are playing baseball there and ask for some reaction from them or something like this, what do you guys think? Dan, you got anything on your plate?
Well, yeah, I also, you know, looked over the, with the Historical District's intent and, you know, had the same concerns about the muster. But the general idea of making it a more facile space with more uses, sprucing it up, I mean, I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it's just probably going to have to go through a number of iterations so that everyone who's invested in it now feels like they have a voice, can participate in the, in the process. I know there's just got to be general buy-in to change something that's so significant to the town.
And, and a maintenance plan, you know, associated with that. Chuck, have you got anything?
So Cole, you know, it being a project along with the Ferno family and their, their son, he can certainly reach out to the baseball folks as well as get some more information on the muster issue and then maybe put together, because you'll need to know when this would unfold. So I don't know if we could come back with a proposed schedule to hear more feedback. How should it? I'm naive about the process.
I think if your son, and I want the board to weigh in over me if they have a concern, I think that's part of the project is to let the son do some of the work. If he's going to do some of the work, it seems like you're able to do it in a very professional way, you know, take names, write down what people are saying to you because that will be ground truth. That will go back out and, you know, kind of go over your tracks. So that exercise is going to be good for you. Anything else?
Sorry, Chuck. Where the trees are going in along High Road, there is a gas main right there, so if you're digging in for that.
Call Dick Safely.
Oh, yeah, no, always, always.
And where you have the hydrangeas and a couple of the trees, there's a fire hydrant right there. We have a real careful of that one. So I think that serves that whole area in there. That's my only comment.
Which, which maple is invasive? Sugar maple's not, they're native. Which is?
Norway.
No, it's good. All right.
The one that can use is two trees everywhere.
I know, I know.
And sugar maples grow very quickly.
Yes, they do.
So foliage season, they'd be orange or...
They'd be red and orange. So the whole idea was the Elms were really majestic, especially in winter, as you can see because you would see the form. Where you don't always really see the form except for from a distance when they're in leaf. But the thing about the sugar maples, their form's spectacular as well. And the fall color, as you know, it's just so traditional in the winter. And there are no known diseases or insects that really affect the sugar maple.
You may have spoken to the potential of using them for projects for kids to actually tap them.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And then also taking the wood from some of the existing trees. Some are dying, if you look. And I, I did an inventory of all the trees and have a list and so forth, what's existing. There's some trees, it actually shows on here. These are the existing trees on here. Except for these three and the ones that I proposed would possibly where we will move them for the muster.
On the perimeter trees, what do you leave for space in between them, the way you have them laid out now?
Uh, there's about fifty to sixty feet depending. And that's when we look at the gas main, when we look at, because that's going to determine so that we can get them as uniform as possible, but working within the existing structures.
In keeping maybe as historical as possible. Before you walk in, I think one of the Historic Commissioners, which you will get a copy of this if you ask Alan.
Great.
The addition of trees to the outer ring has been discouraged in prior meetings due to the kill off from Rose Salt. The planting of trees too close to the outfield of the ballpark area will affect its use as a baseball playing field. We do encourage replacement of existing trees that die off so the green will retain its original character, which means whatever spacing the elm tree says, it'd be kind of nice to retain some of that spacing or whatever, you know, poetic license and things, but...
As to the maintenance plan, how do we calculate? Because as we form the charitable organization that will raise the money to achieve this, what should we have in mind as residuals? You can tell us a figure for maintenance, but the town already maintains it to some extent, so we'd be adding...
You should get in contact with James Saretta, Highway Sareya.
Okay.
Run it with him. Great guy, you really like him.
So if we need to augment on a monthly or yearly basis?
Well, you might be making some of the maintenance more easy and that was what James might say. And also, you know, our town administrator has a little control over some of that pot, so it might, because she is in control of the highway department, so that would be another... She's not here tonight. She usually is. She's in the Fine Arts Committee.
How about the Christmas tree? I know it was planted with...
I kept the evergreen seeds.
Existing, existing?
Yeah, half the house.
Christmas tree?
Absolutely.
So no, no, absolutely didn't move any more. It was just some of the perimeter trees.
We have a test sheet placing that.
And I actually moved them in so that they're far enough off, they're minimum of ten feet off the...
Decide because of salt and so forth, thinking about the trees, so I actually did.
If there's one tree I'd love to see replaced, it's the Christmas tree.
The other one?
With another Christmas tree.
Oh, okay. The other issue against one is we, we plan a, an initial fundraiser with, we'll co-host it with the Ferno family and I, you know, if we could invite whomever, representative or all of you to that, that would be terrific as representatives of the town.
I mean, as we go along and as this is on television and as it gets and gone is a little more information, we'll probably have more public input, which we always try to work within that realm of, you know, understanding what their concerns are, what their hopes would be. And they might be totally all good, but it usually doesn't go that way.
So the initializing is great. I love it.
Speaking of that, another town person you'd want to talk to is the Tree Morton as far as looking at those trees and suggested planting. And then just because this is televised, I wasn't sure if you had a website where people could comment or someplace to contact you guys, ask us to...
We're in the process of centering the website.
Good, perfect. So the website is greener.care and we're having it built now. So people will be able to comment.
Fantastic.
Questions from the audience, sir?
What, what side of the, do I have to go down south?
Just state your name.
Long question. What side of High Road down there are the power lines on? Aren't they on the park side going south?
Yeah, they're, they're running along here.
Yeah, that's what I thought because that's one of the, yeah. So that, that'll be something you'll have, something else you'll have to work with, they'll be out there cutting holes in your trees.
Oh, yeah, I know. Very much. They were actually offset purposely. All the trees are offset. This is our line so that we wouldn't have to worry about the lines. I actually, on a different note, but way back, one for the town of Newbury Port, I started the street tree program and the urban forestry program in the city. So I'm very familiar and did a complete inventory of all the street trees and made appropriate lists. So I'm very concerned because you don't want to plant something and then have this big ugly hole destroyer as we're talking about, the form of the majestic tree.
Restore it the way it used to look, get nationally rid and put the wires underground.
Good luck with that. We'll try.
At least there.
I'd like a great idea. I'd like it if they were.
That would be wonderful. We could talk to them, seriously, because we have done that in the past on different projects, talk to them. It's just a cost factor.
Make sure the town doesn't have to pick that up. Two quick questions, Park, Sam. One, with all the additional trees, how does that impact parking on game days?
There's actually, if you count, there's, there's plenty of parking. We've moved it off because right now, I know because I've worked at Keith's house for so many years, it's really hard. You come out here and it's err, err, err when you've got, you know, a trailer and a truck and so forth. We've made it so that they are, again, far enough in, one for the salt and so forth from the road, but also so that you can park because people have to come in between and you can't park, you know, in certain places right now because the trees are right up against the asphalt. So yes, that was taken very much into consideration.
The second question is, the assumption is baseball is the only organized activity that we permit allowed there is, is that, I'm actually on the Recreation Committee and there has been calls to use that space by a number of different users. And we are looking at additional spaces across town to support our town people in different activities. So how would that integrate with?
Well, my thought, I've never really been into baseball, played football and stuff, but I love frisbee and other sports, you know, whether it's just throwing the ball back and forth or playing soccer and leaving this entire area completely open as is because you bring in the fire trucks, you have different events. But also you could be playing baseball and people could still be playing over here with frisbee or other activities. And if not playing baseball, you could play something else.
Yeah, it looks like...
Field hockey, I don't know. It's a pretty good size.
Yeah, and I think once we clear out, to respect the fire use, once we clear out that picnic area, then we're back to the same open space that exists now, so we're not...
Makes sense.
Vern and Keith and...
Cole.
Cole, should have known that. It might be a good start for them to come to a recreational committee meeting. So that might be, and that, if you can do that and come away and we'll understand from them their concerns and their, and their pleasures and then you'll be writing all that down too, so... And while we're thinking of that, is there another, James, Recreation Board, where else could we...
Historical Committee's weighed in.
Historical Committee is, we got them for you.
I think we ought to present and show down the...
Tree, Tree Warden, don't forget.
Tree Warden, Highway.
Jan, do you think of something?
The one I hold on the Historical Commission. That's why we're here today.
I mean, would you like to speak? Because I spoke to it. Would one of you like to speak to it? Did I cover it well enough?
I think you've covered it. You're going to give them a copy of it. Our concern was is partially maintaining the character of place. If you don't maintain the character, then we could lose our historic designation. Right now it's, does it get as, what is it, historic?
District.
National Historic District. Yes, I agree, yes, actually.
And they don't stop you from doing things. They just come by and look and say, oh, it's changed. And then you lose your standing. So we're, it's not like you got to go to them for permission. So we just have to be careful that whatever we do here doesn't change the character from being, you know, like open pasture land into, into some city park with, with brick walkways and and too many trees and things like that, that it, that it maintains its, its character of, as a, as a field, as a pasture.
Well, and Jan, how, how often you guys meet?
Once a month, second Thursday.
It might be a good hit to you.
Two weeks, Thursday.
And if you don't have your new rendition prepared, you know when they need it, you can find out when they need it.
Around the website.
What the Recreation Committee needs. That's probably good because see, we're trying to backfill information and that information like the Historic Commission did, and you'll, you'll be ready for them when they come to your board. So that works out.
Yeah, a little heads up would be good.
Sure.
Yeah, you can just email directly from the Historical Question website on the town website. And we also have a historical website that you can access also from the town website that gives you information as long, as well as pictures such as you have there from, that we've collected over the years on our sixteen thirty-five website, so...
Yeah, this is going to be a main focus of Cole's summer efforts, so so he'll have plenty of bandwidth to integrate everyone's thoughts and feelings.
And we think it's great that you have this interest and that you want to share this interest and expand it to the, to the general population. A lot of people don't even know we exist and we are all town employees, quote unquote, unpaid, but still. And they, we have a historic district, which is not the same as like Newbury Port's local historic district with all these rules and regulations. But from the short house on the corner of Rolfe's Lane all the way to the Swett Isley House, that entire area all the way, like in Newbury Port is, it ends at Mar- Marl Street. That entire area is historic district and it is listed in the National Historic Registry. So we have to keep the general outlay and this, that's how the bank looks like, the bank does, instead of, because that's the house that was there. And the same thing with the schoolhouse. Had to, had to maintain its outside physique so that we keep the whole view of the, from the green and its historic nature, so... But we think it's great and yep, Benedict Donald did train troops on the green in the Revolutionary War.
Our troops.
Our troops. That was when he was a good guy. And that's what The Rock is, actually. It's got a monument out there. It's right near the ball field. That's up.
Well, you guys prepared a great argument. Thank you. Thank you for what you brought to the meeting tonight and we would be, and also, and we would also be tremendously in this if we didn't ask our town planner what she might think or what she might want if she needs anything from the project.
Well, I would just...
Not the tailor, by the way.
I would just sort of second what Jan said. I think, and well, it really needs to be in keeping with the historic character and of the district of the upper green.
Absolutely.
One question to the Historical Commission people. How do you feel in regards, because I think we're keeping with everything that's pretty much there except with the parameter and so forth about the brick. One, the one reason I questioned myself, but I, I just want to draw attention to these wonderful memorials and the history of the town, and I feel that will draw the eye when people go by. And I just didn't know how you felt in regards to that. The other was bringing, because there isn't a sidewalk that goes along here. Bringing a sidewalk all the way down and really, because I wanted to draw attention to that rock because I think it's pretty historical and it's really neat and nobody ever even pays attention, nine out of ten anyway. So just want to think that.
For myself, this is just me. The brick walkway along the, along the roadside, the High, High, High Road there, along the road and maybe even over into the flagpole, okay. I think the character of the, of the pond itself, if you lost, make a, if you loop it, that's just me.
And the only thing that I might add to that is my knees are bad and I have a heck of a problem walking in Newbury Port. So however the bricks are put in, we probably ought to have them put in in a way that, there's a lot of different ways to put bricks in, so...
It's all in the underlay.
Yeah, she's going to say it's all in the foundation. The problem is it's only the person that...
And that's what James...
But if I dove in, it would break it.
That's what James, like Chuck said, would be so good because he don't want to put in an attractive nuisance that causes this, have a lawsuit.
So as we're all here, I did have one question about recognizing donors. Are, does anyone have a bad feeling about bricks that's a gift of the Smith family or... Okay, because that'll help us when we raise... I mean, you say this will cost five thousand.
Take a look at Newbury Port and you see the trees all along there. They're lifting the roots, lifting the bricks up. Just be thinking about it, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, Green Street is definitely... It's all over.
All right.
I wear my hiking boots in Newbury Port.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sorry for being late tonight.
Oh, it's fine. Fine, fine, fine. And the Recreation Committee is president here.
Thanks, Cole.
And they have a request of the Recreation Committee. Can you come on up? My task, those guys, Jan, Vern, talk a lot, you gotta go.
I need to get a good look in. Thank you very much.
You have a request to alter the sign at Manta Fields and that's on Central Street. And from what I see, it's for reasons of making it more useful, but why don't you explain to us what you're thinking of doing?
Well, there's a couple avenues on which we look at the current signage and property. The sign that describes the rules and regulations are in a place where if you're driving, we don't want to read them. You are allowed to move to a safer spot. The sign that we'd like to replace with the sign distinguishing the name of the field and the users of the field would help people coming off the highway to see, you're reaching your destination. It'd be much more attractive while, you know, from a brain's perspective. It will help distinguish the properties that come under the Recreation Committee's jurisdiction that this is the town property.
Now, for the sake of sounding stupid, is the picture now that we have here, the existing... Now, for the sake of sounding stupid, is the picture now that we have here the existing sign or the sign that you're hoping to build?
It is a rendition of what we would like to put there.
Good.
Give you a sense of what it looks like, so.
I think it, I think it looks classy.
And you're asking tonight for a motion to go ahead and do it, to continue with the, uh, previous question, and funds are coming out of recreational.
Yes.
So, I would entertain a motion, I have to look at the picture and we'll have a discussion. Go ahead.
I move to approve the new speech. Second.
Any discussion?
No, uh, go ahead. So would the other, the sign with the rules be moved over to the parking lot or what is the plan?
Uh, working with, uh, DPW, we'd like to move the sign that is currently there towards the field house, so when people come in, they can see it. There's also a sign with rules as you drive in, again, a traffic hazard. Move that one to another location to be determined, maybe in the further, in the rear of the property, so people are parked in the back of the property, there's a set of rules that they can see.
We can also with that way, alright.
There's other signs that we'd like to get in as we go along, working with DPW and the fire chief as to where things can be located to make the readable, safe, and does that impede their access to the field?
And as I look at that sign, and I might be reading too much into it, but it probably has the ability to put some different things in there if something changes.
Yes, the goal is to have the top part set, that, um, the slat at the bottom will be used to distinguish our different users. They would be purchasing their own slab, if they don't want it, they'll use it once in a while, that's great, if we have, uh, different uses for the field, there's some ideals planned, we can identify the, um, different uses as well.
All those in favor? Any more discussion, all those in favor? Good, thanks.
Thanks.
Good. That was easy, as it seems to be certain, and I agree. Peter.
Yeah.
We have, uh, a vote to approve the amended pound of newbie regulations for the shellfish industry and harvest season seaworms, and it seems, Peter, do you wanna explain, it was a typo?
No.
Come on.
The chairman of the fish commission, yeah, it was a typo, you see, our, uh, applications to do March first, and we weren't living fine until April first, it's late, so that made, nobody had to get their license application until April first is when our licenses come up, it was a typo. So the late few should've started once you missed your March first deadline, so April first shouldn't be in there, does that make sense?
It does to me, and I would entertain a motion to amend.
Motion to amend? Second.
And you're reviewing the commercial claim last-
Right at, right after this. Go ahead.
Discussion.
Yes, sorry, but JR and I talked about last time after the meeting, um, with the, the proof of ID.
Yes.
And town residency, and, uh, my understanding is that if you bring in your tax bill, you can blackout the amount that you owe.
Absolutely, all we want is the name and address.
Yeah, just wanted people to be aware of that, that they don't have to give financial documents.
That makes me feel better, I didn't mean to be a payment.
No, it's fine, and, and I think that, not to go off topic, but I'll be back before this comes around again, and everybody that's been vetted this year won't go through that again unless their status changes, their address or whatever, I mean, they've proved that they're a town resident, they, you know, I'll have to talk to my other board members, but the way we're leaning now is they'll take a copy of the this year's license, and that's what we'll be on, if anybody new coming in will jump through the same hoops that these people jumped through this year. So we made it a little tougher, but once you go through those hoops, then it gets a little easier.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I just wanted people to know that they didn't have to just-
No, I, I, you know, I mentioned that last, and all we wanna see is the name and address on, on the tag, if that's what we have to use.
Are there any other forms you accept?
What's that?
Are there any other-
We had to, yeah, we had, we had, we had a couple of guys that couldn't come up with the documents that we were looking for, so we split the people up among us and then we went out and interviewed basically, you know, and we chased them down and we begged them that they were legal newbie residents, so all the names that you have are legal newbie residents and should be granted a license.
And thank you for going the extra mile, because some people, if you've been through a rough batch in your life, or, or you, you know, your life's in the state of rebuild, you might not be able to furnish those-
We're not in a business of stopping people from clamming. If they, if they're legal newbie residents, then we'll do everything we can to help you get that license, and if they're not, then we'll do everything we can to stop them from getting that license.
Okay. Thank you very much, Peter, um, all those in favor of the motion to amend?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we also have a list of commercial clam permit applications that run out as below. Uh, after listening to Peter and the extreme vetting and everything else, uh, I would ask my board to read all those names over, unless you want me to go through them one by one.
Hey, um, since we have a forum now, I'm gonna recuse myself, there's a couple names on there, so it's just cleaner if I-
Oh, okay, fine.
You know, the people in close.
I mean, is the board comfortable with just taking them or they want me to read them?
Okay, let me know, yeah, motion to approve the list that is submitted by the, uh, by the commission chairman. Second.
Um, any more discussion on that? All those in fa-
Just say, I'm-
Have a, have a, have a, have a, have a those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just go back, yeah.
Okay. Didn't even make it out of the room.
Gotta move like that.
We need to review, approve and sign two seventeen business license renewals as follows. Bob Hodigan, and that would be, is that pronounced right, I hope, it's Bob Blasta, um, from my turn bike, Elizabeth Woodward, Lizzy Soak, Elizabeth Woodward, the painter Pony Barn.
Motion to approve all, second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, appointment of Kerry S. Boyd, uh, two thousand, I mean, uh-
Two oh one.
Two oh one, Middle Road, to the board who registersized for a term of three years, and that would run consecutively between four one, two seventeen and three thirty-one, twenty twenty.
Motion to appoint?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, we've done this before, this is appointment of election workers, and as we did on the earlier clam warden, I would like everyone to read that list, and if there's no, um, opposition to the fact, I would just take the appointment-
You have credit, motion to approve all with the chair. Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to set, May ninth, two thousand seventeen, election time, from seven AM to eight PM.
Motion to approve, second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote to set, town meeting, date of four twenty five seventeen at seven PM.
Motion to approve, second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, poor James. Appointment of James Sarette to the stormwater management team, uh, three twenty eight seventeen through six thirty seventeen.
Motion to approve, second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
He doesn't walk for us, this guy, he really does. I'm really impressed with him.
In a lot of ways, right, sure.
Yes.
So, now.
Uh, no.
I'm, oh, do you have a question, Jan?
Ron's just questioning the dates.
If he's only being appointed for three months, I was just-
There, there might be a reason why I'm not gonna question that.
If I may, the terms of all the stormwater management team are through the end of June of twenty seventeen, so then they'll all be-
Then they'll be reappointed.
Reappointed.
All for this.
The voice of wisdom, say. Um, so, I have a little, Ellen's gonna backfill for me. Tracy's not here, cause she's at the finance committee next door, contract execution collective bargain agreement for the town of Newbury and the team to see you need local, have, we've been aware of this and all we're asking for is a motion and motion to sign.
That's right.
And that's with the highway department?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so.
Motion to sign, second.
Um, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We also have the appointment of the border fire engineers, which needs to be done before one seventeen, so we're taking it tonight, and I will read the F eighteen border fire engineers, the appointment date of April first, two seventeen to March thirty first, two eighteen, and it is Douglas Jamvin Junior, Douglas Packer.
Nathan Walker, Wallace Zeller.
Good. So I will kinda sit back on this one and then I-
Chairman, motion to approve all, second. Okay, all those in favor? Alright.
Cook and Red Lawn, town administrator for it, I'd like to give them a point as follows. Old business. Citizens' concerns. Come on.
I, I don't-
Can I stand up? Well, you can, if it, it helps the cameras, go ahead, especially where you have a concern. Stand up, sir.
Oh, what's not a concern, it's a question. Um, what, what, what is the procedure if I want the town to dump ten yards of gravel on that road or on the lower green, right near the, right, right where it comes out onto High Road, and ten yards of loam underneath the maple trees that are there? I have a tractor, I will spread it.
For the roots.
For the roots and for the puddle, for the puddle.
Yeah.
And be about ten yards.
There again, that is James Sarette, he's in charge of maintenance.
Who is it?
James Sarette. The head of the highway. Yeah.
I should know what the procedure was.
Yeah, and when it, when it comes to like town materials and stuff, it's a lot cleaner and more legal to absolutely contact James, but let them do- Right at the highway, right down the street.
And do, do me a favor, just for the sake of clarity, uh, we're, Selectman, I'm in control of the property, but also Selectman, I know he's in control of ordering town personnel around because it's under the Town Administrators Act, uh, to see, see, or at least talk to Tracy.
Okay, okay, good, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Absolutely, thank you for your concern.
I'll spread it, I'll just have to dump it.
We probably, there'll be some reason where you can't spread it.
Right.
Don't worry.
You're better off letting it be.
I'd like to move it to the other end.
Alright, correspondence, we have a letter from George Pasanka, scout master from, um, the troop fifteen of Raleigh, and I always go and tell the story of, quote, my sons are eagles and I was involved in scouting, uh, I might not put my finger right on it, thanks Chuck, a letter from George, and George has been there a long time, cause he was there when I was there. Boy Scout troop number fifteen of Raleigh, Massachusetts is proud to announce that James Patrick Kay has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, January nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. I understand that you would respond to past this achievement through some form of recognition and any communication from you would be presented as Eagle Scout at boys ceremony. I would appreciate any action of your part showing support for this young man, please send to the date. And usually Ellen, you craft something and either at least I sign it or the board signs it, and scouting guys, you know, is, uh, it's a tremendous-
Huge.
-by, by the people involved, as adults and by the kids going through the process, and anytime you can support the scouts, talk with good eagle projects is always good, so. Uh, motion?
I have motion to send a letter, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting minutes, review of, February fourteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Uh, motion to approve this route?
Uh, there's actually, um, amendment that needs to be made, I was listed as absent from part of it.
Were you absent?
No, I was there, I was taking a roll call at the time.
Were you sleeping?
I missed a whole one, so, so I would, I've already talked to Ellen about amending that, and so-
Would you like to make the amendment?
Yeah, motion to approve the amended minutes.
Okay.
Yep, second.
Um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nobody even, Damon was there. February twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen, review of minutes, motion?
Motion to approve, is it written? Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Warrants, do we have them?
Yes, we do.
Motion to asylone.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting updates, anyone do something?
Yeah, um, nothing, nothing spectacular, but, um, OPM and designer selection committee for the new police station, town hall renovation, uh, basically an update on that, we're editing the, the request for qualifications for an OPM, with, the state gives you some guidelines to go by, we have a draft document, so we're just going through clarifying language, make sure there isn't, aren't things we wanna add to the document, uh, simple edits, things like that, and also, um, Selectman Jessuson and myself, this afternoon, part of the reason I was late tonight, and the town planner and some other folks from the committee and a few citizens from the town toured the Salisbury Police Station, and, um, beautiful, high-tech building, you know, different town, absolutely bigger than we need, but I came away from it, uh, knowing more, um, having a little bit more of a vision of what I'd like to see in the police station for one. And, uh, some of their experiences going through the process, we are selecting the forming committee, selecting the OPM, selecting the designer, and finally the architect, and I'd like to thank Chief Fowler for having us, taking time, and, I mean, we were there for, darn near two hours going through the police.
You know something, um, just to be, you speak, and Damon's already said, um, we could be there, Chuck and I, uh, but we should maybe, a board asked if we could go to see the facility too.
Love to. Chief Fowler said, we all have his card, anything you need, any question you have, he was very gracious and receptive, um, basically, and he said anything he can do to help clarify things or guide us through the process, he's willing to do. I was very appreciative of that, he was great tonight.
Awesome, and that should be doing the order, maybe we should send him a letter, thank him.
Yes, so, so, uh-
If you could just draft a quick letter outside and thank him for his hospitality or whatever.
Yeah, no, we're, oh, go ahead. There are a number of things that they caught during the process of building and construction, that if, you know, looking ahead to our own construction, if we can keep those things in the forefront, it'll, it'll save us a lot of money, every change order, astronom, that type of building, and so, you know, having someone locally just going through the process is a huge asset to us.
Thanks, guys.
Small thing, yeah, we had a veterans' annual meeting for the budget.
No, is that down in Nipswich?
Yes, it was, and eight towns convened, and we passed the budget, and Karen Taylor's, uh, excellent cutting and trimming has, uh, brought the budget down, so the newbie is actually down seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents this year.
And providing the same services.
Exactly, more services, actually, she's done a very, very good job. I would also like to say that the newbie veterans' breakfast is the first Thursday of every month, it is at nine thirty at the Council on Asia.
And you were involved in that process of choosing her and getting her in place, and she's done a good job?
And part of the budget to look for.
Alright, is that a session done? They can't ensure, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Meeting update, we all were at the MRB meeting.
MRBA, yep, sure.
Um, a lot of talk of dredging, which there always is at those meetings.
That dredging too is a little more specific, and JR and Damon, because you don't have that backspace of information, a lot of the conversation for the ability to have like a lifetime permit to dredge is the dredging, the initial conversation, and of course the other conver, well, let me finish this one first. That initial conversation on dredging is that the fishing boy boats on the point are running out of water, there's no place for them to come in anymore, doesn't seem to be an endangered species or anything there, so they're going through the permit to be able to do a limited dredge, which the owner of the fishing fleet is gonna have to dredge and be able to redecorate some of that sand, you know, all the way for emergencies are on reservation terrace where all the problems are, and that's to be as permit allows. The other dredging that the guys are talking about is there is a consolidated dredge project, and Lon, you can remember some of these things, and we used to go over, you know, doing some of the other things, but the Piscatackar River is going through a huge dredging process, they're going to, it's some astronom, little figure, figure, allow the Cubi guys for like three dollars to be transported down and dumped offshore. I think true, one of the towns probably where it's, where is interested in it, and we're interested in it, Salisbury's interested in it. There's a lot of borings that have to be done, some of that is glacial till, and maybe not compatible, so it wouldn't be a dumping on the beach anyway, but the whole thought now, inside or outside of that bar, and that's part of the modeling project that came out But the whole thought now, inside or outside of that bar, and that's part of the modeling project that came out of the Sandy Grant, which I was involved in, where would the best place be to put some of that sand, on the inside or the outside of the bar? Where would be most beneficial for the transport of sediments further down to Annapolis Way? And also moving back into the beach, which needs to be nearest naturally. This third dredge that they're talking about is the Merameck River is readying for another dredge. Because it's also boats run on the ground trying to get out, under certain conditions. And always, when that type of a dredge occurs, the Corps of Engineers always take the least expensive place to dump, which is offshore. It would be nice to at least get them to dump near the bar, on the inside or the outside, whatever this model that we have from Sandy runs and tells us the best place to dump it is. And obviously, I don't know how many years it was ago now, to be exact, but we also dumped a hundred and sixty thousand Cubic guys or whatever it was up on the beach not too long ago. And it really has, it's really stabilized that whole beach area. So those are the dredges that you spoke to. I'm glad you guys were there, it was good.
And then there was also the land squad discussion, which was a surprise to all of us, with Mayor Newburyport for a potential station out on the island. So that was a surprise that came up at that meeting.
Well, I think some of that is still in the very primordial stages. What Damon is speaking to is the government lighthouse area. Where mosquito control was housed for a long time. I guess there's a policy with the federal government existing right now, anyway, with federal fish and wildlife, if they can't sell it, but they can swap it, it would be of interest right now for them to swap that area, because they're not utilizing it. For an area that would be of higher priority for maybe the expansion of the refuge with sea level rise and all the impending issues that the refuge is undergoing, their visioning and forecasting for. It's pretty elementary at this stage. I think it would be, have a use there, speaking about for a satellite fire department, where we can't even, you know, man all the time the needs that we have at our own fire department. So it, it's going to be a stretch, but anyway, that's what.
Yeah, it seemed a very, very sure idea to be discussing with the mayor before anyone in town.
Okay, I'll look into that in a second. And yes, there was a Plum Island Fire Department many, many years ago, but that was before the report with Union. Now you're going to be mixing Union, on Union guys, two different towns, that was a no-no. We did look into the mosquito building, the doors were not high enough to put fire apparatus or the ladder truck in there, and the floor was not strong enough to hold it.
So you mean this isn't a brand new idea?
Oh, go ahead. But, so those are some of the things that, you know, you're going to have to look into when you do that. An ambulance and a rescue truck down there, wonderful idea for a fire, I don't know, you're going to really think about that.
I have concerns about building a new fire, a new third fire department in a town of seven thousand people.
And as I said, we have a fire department now that needs a lot of money.
And I understand that the flooding concerns and things down there, but.
We have a fire station that needs repairs now. Once you lose access to Plum Island is tough, and the only other concept that feeds into that is if you lose the ability to access Plum Island, it's usually during a storm, that people have had enough recognition of it's coming, and maybe should plan a little bit for it. That medical emergency, that's kind of that thing that occurs, like the hot tax.
Oh, I remember paramedics jumping over the bridge when it was, you know, couldn't close. It was horrendous.
Fortunately, we have Matt Fly breaking up report, we're very far.
In a storm, they won't fly.
They won't fly. But the only thing is, we still have tremendous manpower needs in the town of Newbury to staff out two existing fire departments in the way that they need to be staffed, because of, we're a growing, we're a growing town.
Yeah, exactly. So anyway, those are my concerns on that issue.
Oh, it wasn't, it was, the whole idea caught me by surprise, and so I wanted to bring it forward as something that.
All right.
I get used to those.
Surprises.
So I can't adjourn?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
On this particular subject, being a Plum Island resident, I, a lot of us are under the impression that whenever the bridge opens, that is emergency services on the island side of it. And so the stuck bridge guy dying of a heart attack.
There was three years ago, I don't know if that's still in practice, but I cannot answer to that.
Who would?
The chief.
Okay.
Chief, and they want to have, oh, Wally, you're in here.
Wally's here tonight.
Sorry, Wally.
And Wally is deputy chief, I didn't want to put him on the spot with Congress.
No, we still do the practice, and we have ample notification between Newbury and Newburyport, an engine and ambulance are stationed east of the bridge for bridge openings. Sometimes communications break down, sometimes the bridge opens up without us being notified. But when we have ample notification, we work with Newburyport to get two pieces of emergency equipment staged on that during the bridge openings.
Okay, great.
Now, can I ask Wally a question, and it's not to put you on the spot? Is that part of the reason for that procedure, the fact that that bridge has a tendency to stick open?
Yes.
Don't you think that the residents of Plum Island should, where it's a state bridge, probably put some time into finding a way to make sure that bridge doesn't stick open? So that might be something for people to think about, and I certainly don't have a problem, as, you know, Chair of the Board of Suck when asking my board to maybe look into, and I'm not positive, the procedures of how the waterway passages of bridges, what department that falls under, I'm sure it's like as clear as a bell. But it does seem, even though it's a small bridge, most of the big boats go around. It seems if you're going to have a bridge that's capable of opening, and you could get asked to open it. Is there, is there a bridge tender there now?
I don't know if there's a bridge tender there all the time, or it's, it's will call.
They phone ahead and.
Yeah.
I mean, if the bridge doesn't open, you're not going to fix it and close it. So, but anyway, that might be something to take on.
Yes, the river is really silting too, to the south valley.
One of the things that the Sandy Grant has done is there was nine hundred thousand dollars from the grant I was involved in, and a hundred thousand dollars from the refuge, we put together a model hydrologically from the Pocahontas, Nipwich River, and especially inclusive of the Plum Island Bridge. And the whole idea from coming out of that is to have a greater understanding of what the bridge has done to those sediment conditions, what it's done to trap in fresh water, all the things. Hopefully, we'd like to get the bridge reconditioned in the way it should, maybe have a couple of culverts there, because the bridge is not so much bigger open. And that's what the model is designed to do and run now. So the model's been completed and it will run.
It is completed.
It is completed. And remember, you talked, yeah.
Yeah.
That's where I saw Lawn, is that what it's meeting, yes.
And just one more quick thing I want to mention.
Thank you.
About the small bridge grant we got, and I just want to open this by saying Chuck really took the reins on the Main Street Bridge. And he did a lot of the legwork, and he really deserves it, the credit.
Thank you.
Because of pending obligation on his part, James and I are going to go to the State House tomorrow. There's a ceremony about the small bridge grant program, you know, so we can just give our thanks and appreciation for it. But I just wanted to mention Chuck, you know, it's really Chuck's baby.
I just don't want to do that, because I got some work I can't.
I know, but I just wanted to mention that that's, you really took the reins on that and put your head down and charged ahead.
Thank you. We have quite an aggressive growth program for the summer. The two bridges being rebuilt, miles of road, and that very aggressive parking plant, where it's called a Grange. So it is, it's going to really look great by the light of the sun. All right.
So that being said, this is kind of a hiatus in our wonderful meeting, and we have to go get the, and, and Board of Finance Committee in here. And we are going to then discuss the budget if people are so inclined to sit and have some more wonderful information on the whole. I think Ellen just left.
Oh. Oh, you just did, okay.
So should we reconsider whether we.
I want to do that.
I know she's just five minutes.
All in favor, I, no discussion.
Couple of things, just to make you aware of in my report. Has anybody noticed the installation of the sign?
I came running in here so fast today.
Nobody noticed, okay. But we do have a new sign out on the acknowledging the town of Newbury here, out on the sign out front.
Excellent.
Yeah.
How long has it been there?
Oh, about two weeks, three weeks.
Is there talk about another sign being somewhere?
I've also asked Rick Salmonson to put a sign at the head of Kev Way. He's going to have to talk to James about where to locate it on our right of way, but I've already gone through Sam and his resoning. So we're going to put another one at the head, something that looked very similar to the sign that was on Town Hall. So hopefully, people will find us. Also, I don't know if you took action on the execution of the DPW collective bargain, that's done, okay, great. We have a snow and ice deficit right now, stands at a little over twelve thousand dollars. I don't.
That was two years ago.
Yeah, I have an understanding that it could go up depending on the weather.
Martha is, did you have an opportunity to discuss the housing production?
I didn't, I got in late from the Salisbury.
Do you want to just do that briefly, so we can get a date for Karen?
This is the 40B, no? What is it?
FUPC is doing a regional housing production plan for all the member communities. And this will be a wonderful thing, because it will really help us if we have future 40Bs after the one, to, you know, give us a little breathing time. So what they will be doing is, is having some open houses, and I didn't bring them here with me, so I'm afraid I don't have the dates. To discuss the process, they'll be working with each of the member communities to assess our, our needs and a development plan, which will then be registered with DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, which will then give us, I think, a year, if we get a 40B sort of application, advise us a year of time. Will help us.
Definitely something you want to pursue ahead.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So the memorandum of understanding is, is. So that will be starting in quite shortly. And I'll send some information out to you all as you get, with that workshop, to some of the people who are interested in participating.
Awesome. Thank you.
And the only other thing I wanted to make you aware of, we, I've been in touch with the Human Resources Board. We're going to look at the personnel policy and do a complete review. I finally, after five years, had an opportunity to read it really thoroughly from cover to cover, and there's a lot of things in there that.
Troubled sleuth.
We're taking, yeah, we're taking from different communities at different times, and they're no longer relevant. So we're going to work on the next year to try and get that documented, that document updated. And the two thousand and eighteen budget. So I just had an opportunity to run through it with the Finance Committee. So if I go too fast or you have any questions, just call us. A lot of this you may be familiar with already, because a lot of it came out of our meetings. But normally, what I do is I try to put together all of the things that I've heard you talk about as priorities throughout the year. And a lot of them are consistent throughout the years, you know, we, we can't always accomplish things as quickly as we'd like to. So it doesn't always come to fruition in one budget cycle. But we are continuing to protect and improve the town's overall financial condition. Over the last, you know, five or six years, I think we've all seen a marked improvement in, in, in our numbers, what we've been able to do, what we've been able to accomplish. So we want to continue going in the right direction, which is one of the main reasons that we've engaged the Commons Center to help us to put together that comprehensive financial policy document. You'll see a draft of that in your budget booklet, just for comment, review and comment. The budget development is always trying to stay within those recommended practices that you see in that document. I hear over and over again since I've been here, want to keep it affordable, want to keep it affordable. Yes, we're demanding of certain services, but you've got to keep it affordable. So that's always in the back of the, in the back of our minds while we're formulating the budget. reinstatement of public safety programming, we're still, you know, working our way back slowly. Capital facility issues, we've done a lot, we still have a lot to go. Our OPEB liability, that five million dollars is still looming. And the establishment of stabilization program that would fund the town's asset replacement. We have made tremendous progress in terms of capital asset replacements, repairs, renovations, and working with the Capital Planning Committee. But what we haven't fully established is how we're going to fund it. So we rely on year to year, we'll fund some of it in the operating budget, we fund some of it through free cash. The goal is that you have a long-term capital plan that would be fully funded by destabilization account. It's going to be a while before we get there, especially considering we have so many of the, the large purchases, the apparatus replacements that we're going to be looking at over the next couple of years. But that's still a very important goal. We've got the Triton lease agreements and the agreement review. And as always, enhancing communications with residents, I hope we've made some progress this year with the IT Director's Initiatives, and we'll keep moving in that direction. Two thousand and eighteen, total operating budget is a little over eighteen million. We're looking at eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar increase, four point eight percent overall. The significant changes, not a surprise, is going to be in public safety, some in general government, DPW. Education is staying very flat this year. Some of those, you know, decreases that we've seen in, in education funding assessments has gone to the stabilization fund, we've put extra money in there. And we've been able to bring back some of our public safety functions as well. You've probably heard me say this over and over again, but we rely very significantly on our property taxes. The thing that we need to keep in mind this year, our new growth is starting to slow a little bit. So that does have an impact on our operating budget. State aid is only going up slightly to eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, it's a little over twenty thousand dollar increase for us, or three percent. You know, everyone's always talking about new revenues, we've got to generate new revenues. There aren't a lot of opportunities for us, we're in the process, you know, we had the, the Owen Way Parkin proposal, and then we're still considering solar initiatives, but none of them are going to bring in a, a, a significant amount of funding. Expenditures, we've got rising utility costs, not necessarily because the cost of the utilities are going up, but because of our facilities are changing. And we've recently purchased the Morgan Ave Fire Department, and we're also looking to the future for, you know, adding more square footage. Health insurance costs, retirement assessments are only up modestly, same thing with health insurance costs. We're only at four percent this year, which is great news for us, we usually go up double digits. We've secured some planned design changes. Our unions were very cooperative in allowing us to make those changes, all they had to do was say no, and it wouldn't have happened. But by, through the planned design changes and some luck, we've, we've experienced a, a low increase this year. The two-step method, this year again, we're really realizing some relief in our Triton assessment specifically. We're going to continue addressing our unfunded liability, it's a five million dollar liability. We've got a hundred and thirty thousand dollars funded so far. DPW contract negotiations are complete and executed, and two thousand and eighteen is the actual final year of the police CBA. So we will start actively negotiating probably January of next year. Our revenue structure, we've only got our three major sources of funding, property taxes. Again, you can see the heavy reliance on our. again, you can see the heavy reliance on our residential property tax, local receipts, state aid, and then we do utilize available funds to fund our annual budget, but not our annual operating budget. So, we use about 8%, and that's been pretty consistent over the last couple of years, to fund one-time purchases, our capital asset replacements, those types of things. So, it is a component of our revenue structure, but we don't use it any longer to fund our operating budget. So, before, we had a heavy reliance on plugging our budget gaps with free cash, we do not do that any longer. Again, you look at this and you can see, this year, we're only projecting about $125,000. That number last year was over, I think, $360,000. So, we don't have any significant subdivision growth on the horizon that I'm aware of unless something new has come up. Yeah, I don't think so. So, that, you know, limits our annual increases. Local receipts, this is, you know, motor vehicle excise, our licenses and permits, funds and forfeits, those types of things go into this category, and this is the category that is the most heavily influenced by outside economic factors. So, you'll see, when the economy's bad, this starts to drop. People aren't buying new cars, we're not generating that excise revenue. State aid's been relatively consistent, it's going up slightly. Free cash in our stabilization fund. Now, here, we anticipate some spending. We've got about $1.5 million available for expenditure at a special annual Town Meeting in April. We're going to probably spend down, I think that the initial projection is spending, if it should all be approved, we'll spend about $800,000. You know, so there is, we've still got a ways to go before we can come on that free cash money being there permanently. Revenues, it just kind of shows where the money's coming from, the changes from last year to this year. Available funds, we're spending less than we did last year, but still spending a little over $2 million should everything be approved. Here, you can see, just to break out of, again, another demonstration of the heavy reliance on the tax levy. Our expenditures, operating expenditures are a little over $18 million. 6.6 is our municipal departments, education is 9.4, debt service, a little over $1 million, and benefits a little over $1 million. Breakout of our expenditures. This is what you would typically see, there's nothing there, you know, obviously, you are committed to adequately funding education, that's what you would expect to see in the municipality, your culture and recreational programming is always low because it's not necessarily the first item to be funded. Debt service, we've cut our debt service spending basically in half in the time that I've been here. Kind of shows you where we were, where we are now. You can see, 14% of our operating budget was spent on debt, now it's down to 7%. Municipal operations have stayed relatively the same, benefits gone up a little bit, but you can see the education funding has increased. So, the areas that have the largest increases, overall, the salary and wage line items are going up by 3%. That's exclusive of any collective bargaining agreements or individual employment contracts. Asking for $15,000 in additional funding to our professional and technical services account. That account has paid for a lot of our engineering work. We don't have an engineering department here, so, for example, we're talking about doing some cleaning up of the Plum Island Center area, and one of the first questions is, well, what do we own? And nobody really knew, so we had to have, engage a surveyor to look at the area, identify what we own, then we had to engage an engineer to help with, okay, what can we do where, get us through the permitting process and those types of things. We've used them for appraisals, we've used them for wetland specialists, so every, all of those things fall into that category. Property and casualty, oh, I skipped one, the IT Program Services Account. I don't know if you recall last year, but we asked for an additional $10,000 for permitting software for the building inspectional services, and we have to appropriate it upfront, but the fees pay for it, it's the same thing with this. We need to appropriate it in our operating budget, but we usually get in, the Parking Department tells me about $25,000 a year, so that money will pay for the permitting software. Now, you can get your permits in Town Hall, you can purchase them online, you can run reports, you know, so we'll finally kind of get that online. Public safety calls for a 2% wage increase this year, and police expenses are going to be going up right above $5,400. There is, in their agreement, a clothing allowance, and we have pretty significant turnover, we've lost a couple more guys this year. So, we do, we are still required to honor the CBA relative to that allowance. Fire Department is the operating budget this year, as anticipated, that would see the largest increases. The total operating budget is going up a little over $300,000 this year. There is allowances in there for some additional shift coverage, for some additional stipends, administrative wages, maintenance, increases in maintenance of apparatus, and one of the biggest pieces is I've included $175,000 in the capital outlay line item, and that's anticipating the replacement of the ladder truck and the pump bar, both of which were identified in the report from Emergency Fire Services, I think they were the ones. At this point, I'm not sure if the engineers have actually appointed a committee to start putting together the specifications.
I know the chief has had some initial discussions.
Okay. Okay, so it would follow the same process that we do for everything else? They would put together specifications, they would come before the Capital Planning Committee, they would make their presentation before the Finance Committee and the Board, and ultimately Town Meeting. So, everything is getting pretty routine as far as what our process is, everyone's got a good understanding of that. The inspectional services is increasing about $1,200 for vehicle allowance, they use all the private vehicles. Again, we talked about Triton, and I understand, since I put this slide together, their assessment has gone down an additional 20-some odd thousand dollars, so that number will be updated. The CBA has been negotiated for the next three years, you saw that tonight. Currently, we have seven full-timers in our DPW, down from 13. We've had a lot of discussions with the Director on what is a full complement, because, you know, at some point, we had talked about, oh, we need to get back to where we were. Well, that's not always the case, and we've got to review each operation to see if, okay, do we really need 13? And at this point in time, we're pretty comfortable that seven full-timers is a full complement of employees to keep our department functioning. We've given them all of the equipment, they can do their jobs now, and, you know, we've got a really great team of hard workers, and they're getting it done, and we're getting caught up. So, we've, really, in two years, they've been able to, well, complete 20%, uh, 80% of all of the town's main roadways.
We used to do two to three guys just to clean the beach.
Well, sure. No, we don't do that anymore. No, no.
Right.
No, so, you know, I'm an advocate for looking at it and seeing what's right, because what's right, 10 years of a book of the law may not be right now, so that's where we are in that department. We've got some increases in their expense budget, and also, one of the things, although we've passed that $125,000 override that allowed us to really attack the roads, we haven't had a preventative maintenance program here in the past, so I'm recommending that we add another $25,000 to the road improvement program so we can really get an aggressive crack ceiling program.
As a, as a, top two and a half, or...
Nope, within our operating budget. Yep, within our operating budget. Snow and ice removal, the proposal in the budget, it's increasing by $22,000, that's 75% of the last five years, and as you can see, we still are running deficits, so hopefully that'll get us to where we need to be.
You've been increasing it every year, right?
We have. Yep, we have an increasing...
I'm going to continue to do so.
Yep.
Cool, thank you.
The Board of Health asked for an additional $1,500 for landfill monitoring. Veterans, I plugged in a $2,000 estimated assessment increase based on a 3% increase, but Chuck, you've got additional...
It actually went down...
That's great news.
$767 and 700 cents.
Okay, so now we've got some excess levy capacity. The library has asked, well, has consistently advocated for additional money to allow them to open more hours. We've not been able to do that, but this year, we are going to, this budget proposal includes funding to allow them to open four additional hours per week. And then, the Memorial Day celebrations account is going up a little over $1,250. I think we had a presentation, I'm not sure if Donnie Jarvis came before this board or not, but in his, in his budget hearing, he talked about putting in the medallions that will hold the American flags for the veterans.
They were disappearing left and right, because everybody thought they were bronze, quite a chunk of them, they're just bronze plate. And that's sad.
I've got a projected increase in the debt service account. It's only, it's a small increase of about $46,000. We have not gone out to issue any debt with, relative to our project. However, there are going to be bond issuance costs, and there may be some short-term borrowing that I'll have to do. In the event that it doesn't happen in this fiscal year, because it all depends on the timing of when we get our architect and OPM on board, that will, any excess will just close out to free cash. Essex Regional Retirement, again, just a slight increase there. Our group insurance, 4%. So, those are the biggest increases in the operating budget. And in summary, you know, the document that I presented hopefully addresses what I perceive to be your priorities, and adds back to some shift coverage programming that's been lost in the last decade. We're addressing a lot of our facility needs, repairs, replacements, but we do still have other issues. We have the Morgan Ave Fire Station that we all know is going to need some work. We're looking at Plum Island Center, the Town Landing, those are much smaller projects, and the Newbury Elementary School roof is also on our replacement list. Fire Department, adding shift coverage, classifying all the expenses appropriately, provides for maintenance and replacement of apparatus, and we will continue our significant road improvements. That's what we got on track for fiscal year 2018. And while he's here, so I'd just like to mention, the Fire Department made a proposal, the Board of Fire Engineers came and made an excellent budget presentation, the best one that I've had since I've been here, I would say. So, very impressed with the work they've done and continue to do. It hasn't been easy.
I'll pass it on to the board, thank you.
Please do.
Thanks, Wally. How will spending $800,000 in free cash affect our borrow rate as far as our AA status and the rate that we're likely to receive?
That's a good question.
I don't, I'm not concerned about it. I'm prepared to make presentations and movies and standard empires and to justify the expenditure of those fees. At the end of the Town Meeting, we should have about $700,000. If what we typically do in a year, we'll probably, you know, close out another 200, depending on where revenues come in, it could be 300. So, we'll probably end up somewhere, you know, I shouldn't even say that, because I'm projected, but I'm comfortable that they're not going to see the significant up and down that I could justify, that, you know, we're spending what we need to spend to bring our deferred assets replacements up to date. But we're also very conscious that the biggest amount of money that we have in our free cash or that developed into our free cash was the back tax collections, that's $600,000, and we never, we just keep carrying that forward. So, every year, some balances close out, revenues come in higher than anticipated, we don't fully expend, we get a grant that we didn't anticipate, all those types of things add to our free cash, but our base just keeps moving forward. And even with the proposal of spending $800,000, we're still over $700,000, so I feel pretty comfortable making that argument.
It just gives me concern.
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely.
What I see with Tracy projecting and the Board of Selectmen being very involved in the process, and all our department heads and everything else, that at least we're planning ahead. One of the most, one of the worst things that can happen to a town is when we have a catalyst, failure of a facility, as we found in the Highway Department. We're certainly undergoing some of that right now with the Town Hall facility. So, Tracy's certainly trying to plan ahead, the Board of Selectmen are trying to plan ahead, and department heads are trying to plan ahead to backfill and envision and project so we don't get into this situation again. And it's just because, you know, at a certain time in those 2009, 10, 11, we just ran out of money, so...
And some of the proposals that are on the special Town Meeting warrant, for example, the sewer connection to the Fire Department, there's an estimate in there of $350,000. I imagine when we go out to bid, it'll be lower. Whether or not that stays on the warrant is going to be dependent on how far Beta gets along in their engineering, so that could be postponed until the fall Town Meeting. But, you know, I tried to put everything on here that I thought could possibly done, get done between now and April, but on the meeting on the 4th, April 4th, we can go through these and you can decide, you know, if you want to... We don't have a lot of articles either.
Yeah, the last sold project was almost 50%. Remember, started at 750?
Mm.
Yeah, almost a final bid, 348, I think. Something around, something around there, man. That was a plus.
Wow. Thank you, thank you very much, Tracy, and we still appreciate it. Any other questions on the board that Tracy prefer we kind of go towards a journey? Tracy, have you got anything else you'd like to say to the board? Ellen, we, everything we covered, we have lots. I would make...
We had a lot of sign in tonight.
Okay. So...
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, entertaining motion.
Second.
And any discussion on that issue?
We'll just start reading.